I call to order the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020 by telephone and/or video conferences in accordance with suspension of certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as authorized by the Governor of Texas and the state's attorney general at 5:33 PM. Board members present, Ms. Maricel Keano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Mr. Fernandez will be joining us in a little bit. Board members absent at this time, Mr. Fernandez. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation tonight will be given by Mr. Roberts and the pledges by Ms. Sullivan, if you would stay in place.
Will you please join me in the pledge?
Wait a minute, let's do prayer first.
She was cutting, she was cutting and running, wasn't she? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for a wonderful day. Thank you for the cooler weather. Let it get a little bit cooler. Now, give us wisdom and direction, and please put your hand on this school district, the soon-to-be presidential election and the election for all the others. Put your hand on this country, America, and help this world right now. We need you, Lord. We need you real bad. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, would you please join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Hey, can we create Rhonda for Kenny?
Okay.
Rhonda, you come in here and Kenny will go in your office.
She's waiting. Now, policy update presentation, Jody. Ms. Kinimer will give us our policy update presentation, hopefully gone over it.
Not much to it.
No. No, there's not much to this one at all. So, this is Local District Update 20.05. It is proposed by administra-- it's proposed by-- can you hear me? Yeah.
Okay, it's being proposed by administration, and so we're just trying to clarify our expectations for campus conversations and discussion topics and appropriate things to be discussed in the classroom. And so what we are is we're making it clear that those items of discussion should be aligned to the TEACs, which is the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, and the district curriculum. And that's-- that's the extent of it. Yes?
I plan on enforcing it.
How do we plan on enforcing it?
Yes.
So, the way that you plan on enforcing it is the same way that we plan on enforcing the rest of policy and the rest of the obligations and requirements in that policy, right? And it's by observation. Our administrators are in classrooms all of the time, seeing what is happening, what kind of conversations teachers are having with their students, right? And so it's that same kind of follow-up that is how we would enforce this as well.
Student reported, parent reported.
Parent reports.
What kind of things are we talking about? Can you give me some examples?
Right now, with the election, we just want to remind our employees what their role is and what their role is not. So, we thought it was very timely.
Yeah.
So, our social studies instructional specialists thought it was relevant to align ourselves with not only TASB but other districts as well, making sure this was included. So, Karen can elaborate on that.
I have a question.
Just let Karen go ahead.
Just to add to that, Ms. Chinata has already been focused training to talk about this change, and it's just an additional safeguard that we have some teeth to what she's saying, and that we're not going to discuss controversial topics that are not related to the TEACs or related to the curriculum, which our curriculum is directly related to the TEACs. So, it's just to let them know it's going to be board policy, we're going to take it to the board, and that that's our expectations, and so that if somebody doesn't follow expectation, then we have already talked about it in a focus training, and we've adopted it, and if that's happening tonight.
Who did you say had--
Our social studies high school specialists.
Okay, okay.
She wanted to have this in there.
Yeah, that's great. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm glad we're not-- aren't you glad you're not north of Mason-Dixon line?
Yeah.
Boy, the stuff they're teaching up there is scary.
I said, "Teachers," does this also apply to librarians?
Yes, it would apply to anybody in our schools or working with our kids.
Effective immediately?
It's a hundred dollars.
As soon as you pass it. Great.
It's really what we're telling them is the expectation anyway, but we're going to have this-- just to back that up.
It does need to be enforced.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Jody. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contract for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys duty to the district under their code of professional responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.071, 551.074, and 551.0821, for the purpose of considering and/or seeking the advice of the district's attorneys regarding a mediation agreement in DL versus Pasadena ISD, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 310-SE-0820 and related actions. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, we reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. Okay, the board is going to reconvene in open session at 7:04 PM. First item on the agenda is discussion of state financial accountability rating for 2018-2019.
Board members, we're going to have a presentation by our CFO, Carla Merka. Just to brag on her and her team just a little bit before she gets started, we received a 100, which she'll go through with you, but that's the first time since 2012 when they changed the system that we've received the 100. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Merka.
All right, thank you so much for having us. This is just our annual financial report, so we can go over the first report. This is something that we're required to do by law. And so, as Dr. Powell said, we're proud to announce that this year we have 100 on our first report, and this is for our fiscal year ending 2018-2019. And this is quite an accomplishment because it's getting harder every year, and we're extremely proud of what we received on this grade.
But you worked very hard to get it.
Yes, ma'am, we sure did. It was a team effort. And so, the first pages that you see is just where what we received from TEA, and that goes through every score that they did, and you can see where we received the perfect scores. And I'll break those down when we get to the overview of the worksheet. And so, the first five indicators are just strictly a yes or no answer, and you have to receive a yes to get your full points. If you don't receive a yes on these first five, it's an automatic failure. So, we definitely have our first five. We made sure we turned everything in on time, and everything was ready to go on that side. And then, we start with the indicators where you get the actual points. Our first indicator is indicator number six, and that shows that we had adequate cash flow and current investments to cover our operating expenses. And I'm sure a lot of that helped because we added so much to fund balance because everyone did such a great job with our savings for last year. Indicator number seven was the ratio of the current assets to current liabilities, and they were adequate to cover the short-term debt. We received the maximum of the 10 points on that. The number eight, the ratio for total assets to long-term liabilities was adequate to support long-term solvency. We scored the full 10 points on that as well. Everything we have 10 points, so y'all hear me say that a lot. The indicator number nine, the revenue in the general fund equaled or exceeded expenditures, and we had enough cash that was greater than the 60 days of operating. That's because our fund balance is right at 100. For the year that we close, it's 178 million, which is right-- almost four months in operating expenses that we have.
To the winner.
The indicator number 10, the district had adequate debt revenue to cover the required debt service payments. Yes, we do. We make sure all of our payments are done, and we have all of our payments on time, if not a couple days before, just so we can make sure that there's no issues with our payments. Indicator number 11, which is probably the one that we need to be the most proud of, that's on our administrative costs, and this one, we're $11 million below the state standard. And what this is, is what we code our HR and our business office and superintendent's office. And that's very-- that shows that we're keeping our cost extremely low, and we're putting more of our funds toward the education of the students. And that's extremely something to be proud of, to receive the full 10 points and to be so low below what the standard is. Indicator number 12, the district had a decrease in enrollment, but we didn't experience the decline of 15% over the past three years. Yes, we are experiencing a decline in our enrollment, but it hasn't exceeded a 15-year-- or 15% deficit over three years for the average. And so, we still got the full 10 points on that. Indicator number 13 is the expenditures that we submitted to TEA in our PMS was 494 million, 575,7897. We had a variance of what we submitted with the budget to what we came in at, at a .0002.
Oh, my God.
We missed it by $458.
Oh, my God.
That's pretty good. We really watch what we're doing in there to make sure that we're meeting all the items that we need to. Indicator number 14, the audit report was free of instance of material weaknesses and internal controls. We got the full 10 points on that because we've got some very good procedures in place to show who does what, and so no one is doing the same thing. We have got it spread out, so our internal controls are extremely solid. Indicator number 15, the district did not receive an adjustment repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year to an overpayment for TEA of financial hardship. We are not experiencing financial hardship. We are doing extremely well on where we need to be financially to make sure this district is solid and to support the education of our students. In summary, because we like to give-- this is our time to brag on the business department because it's something we don't do very much because we're really not those kind of people. So, some of the other things that we like to talk about is just our financial strengths. And for us, we try to keep that because of what y'all put in place, our 12 and 1/2% for the prior year's expenditures, and we still maintain what we have in fund balance to exceed that 12 and 1/2%. And we're maintaining our ratings with Moody, and so those are things that we want to make sure that always says up there's our credit ratings. And then, when we get to the operational cost, 88% of our district budget is for salaries. That doesn't leave a lot when you're looking at 100% of a budget for us to use. 3% of that is coming in for our utility bills, and then we do another 1% for our insurance. And so, it-- we really watch. There's not a lot of fluff that we have when people say, "Well, y'all just spend money crazy." We don't. We spend it for the student's education. And having 88% of that on our salary shows that we're putting it where it belongs. And then, again, we talked about the administrative costs, and this is the one that we really focus on. The state limit is 11.05%, and we come in at 5.45%, which that's extremely low for a district our size. And then, a couple of other things that we look at is our tax collections. In the year that we close, we had a 98.6% tax collection that year, and so we always strive to have the 100%. But anything above a 97 is excellent because when we do our budgets, we budget our revenue at 96%. So, that's really good to be above what we are actually budgeting for. And then, on our cash management, we've watched where we put our investments. We only do secure investments. You know, our goal is to make money on anything that we have invested, and we've done extremely well making interest on what we have invested. So, we make sure that it is safe and it's liquidable in case we do have an emergency and we need it. And then, of course, on our budget process, we start our budget process in December, and then y'all start seeing our first round in the spring, and then it's a lot of cabinet meetings, a lot of meetings with everybody to try to see what is the best that we need for everybody, and a lot of hard discussions. And of course, we're fixing to go into a legislative year. We're waiting to see what's going to happen because the odd years are always the hardest because we don't know what to expect. And we always like to look at our awards, and in the past several years, we've been recognized with ASBO and the GFOA for excellence in our annual budgets and our comprehensive audit reports. This is-- these are hard to get, and we make sure that we submit these and we get those. Again, we are recognized with the Comptroller's Office for our transparency stars because we put all of our information out there so it's accessible to anyone that would like to see it. Again, I'm extremely proud of my department. We couldn't ask for a better team that I have, and we try our best to get what the district needs for our students. Part of the first report, we're required to have the superintendent's contract and then her final amended contract, and so those are attached. And then, when we get down to the very last page, this is some of the questions that I'll have Susan send y'all. Did y'all receive-- let me get to the last page here. So, some of the things that we want to know is, what did y'all spend your money on? Because you are-- you represent the district, and so some of the things that we look at is, what did we spend for a school board member for meals, lodging, transportation, motor fuel, or other? And then, we give you a total for the year, and so you can see how much each board member has spent. And then, we also ask, did you receive any money for the superintendent, and did each board member receive anything? Because those are things that we want to report to make sure that we are staying above and beyond the law, and we don't want someone to say that we haven't done what we're doing. And so, we always check those, and we're constantly looking to see if there's any related parties of any kind where y'all might have got a profit on something that the district has done. So, we watch those numbers as well anytime something comes through. And that is our report, but like I say, we're extremely proud of our 100, and we hope to continue to receive our 100s.
Carla, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your department. Thank you for everyone that played a role in this, and you have a lot to be proud of.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions of Carla before we move on?
No.
Okay. Did somebody have something?
I don't think so.
Okay. Next is public-- I'm sorry, special recognition.
Board members, we have several special recognitions, even though we're having a very challenging year. We have great things happening in our district, and so we want to share some of those great things. First of all, normally at the end of each school year, we have our service awards, and we recognize not only our staff but also our board members, and that was not possible due to COVID, like so many other things. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity, having a face-to-face meeting, to recognize one of our awesome board members and volunteers. You know, this board has lots of years of experience, but one of our board members hit a milestone, and that is Mr. Jack Bailey with 10 years of service. So, I wanted to recognize him tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
And they're volunteers, so that's not a check. That's just a little memento of his service for the years of service to our district. So, thank you, sir. And next, I'm going to bring up Tanya Hager, our Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, who's going to introduce some of our awesome business partners.
Yes. Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. You guys want to go on across? Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening in person to recognize some outstanding business partners. As you know, in career and technical education, business partners are essential to the success of our programs. We in Pasadena are so blessed to have some amazing partners who guide us in the curriculum. We teach our students the equipment we have them train on and the certifications that we offer them. They work hand-in-hand with us to ensure that our students are prepared for the next step after they graduate. So, again, thank you for giving us a chance to honor them. The award I am presenting this evening was created to recognize education leaders, business and industry executives, and thought leaders who support and champion CTE programs as a vital part of developing a prepared, adaptable, and competitive workforce. This award showcases outstanding champions from local leaders to national figureheads who have leveraged their influence to expand, improve, and promote CTE. Pasadena ISD would like to recognize Carla Thompson as our region's Association for Career in Technical Education Champion for CTE Award recipient. Carla is the Workforce Development Manager at Turner Industries right here in our backyard. She works through Associated Builders and Contractors, Construction and Maintenance Education Foundation, and the Construction Careers Youth Committee to sponsor many high schools and junior colleges in our region. She provides support for the schools and programs. She sponsors by sitting on advisory committees, arranging guest speakers, making donations, and most importantly, offering job opportunities to our students. Carla is passionate about the construction industry and even more so about career and technical education. She is doing her part to assist with our region's skilled labor shortage by bridging the gap between school and industry, and as a result, young people are able to begin a career right out of high school, and in turn, the industry gains a new generation of skilled and dedicated employees. So, Carla, I want you to know that you are truly changing the lives of our students in Pasadena ISD, and we appreciate you and Next, I would like to introduce another business partner who is a former recipient of this award and who also plays a critical role in the success of our CTE programs and in turn, the success of our students. Dr. Steve Horton, Director of the Schools Training Division of the Construction Maintenance Education Foundation, is here this evening to present a placard to the newly established welding program at Pasadena Memorial High School, which is currently serving more than 160 students from Pasadena Memorial High School and Tegler Career Center. So, please join me in welcoming Dr. Horton.
First off, I'll just say thank you and good evening, folks. When I think about life, I think about what a long journey this has been to stand in a boardroom and be in front of a superintendent. The first name I remember was Geo Thompson on my first-grade report card at Masonville Elementary. I think it was the last name I remember when I graduated Sam Rebern High School, actually 12 years later. But it is a privilege to come and speak to you members and the community and other members here today. I want to start off by giving just a synopsis of what this is about, so you don't just see somebody get a nice plaque, a placard, and then walk away. NCCER, they develop, customize, and standardize construction and maintenance training curriculum for our construction industry workforce across our nation. Literally, this curriculum goes throughout the world now. Why? Because we have a common goal of providing safe, skilled, and productive workforce for the future, which is very critical for us. And you don't have to live in what we used to call stinkadina, and it's not that way anymore because of the nice pollution control efforts we've implemented in this area, to know the importance of construction education and our petrochemical workforce refineries up and down our ship channel. In order to teach this curriculum, a school has to apply to become what's called an accredited training and education facility. Well, we already have five schools within the district that have already gone through the throes of an audit of completing documentation that meets the eight standards that are required by NCCER, and have to respond to continuing audits to maintain that. What I'd like to say is I have a letter that I'll end up giving Tanya, an official recognition, but I want to give an overview of it. On behalf of NCCER and ABC CMF, we want to congratulate and extend our congratulations to Tanya Hager, Zeke Garcia, and Andrew Tugwell. And we've added a faculty member since I wrote this. Hello, Ignacio. We want to congratulate them because in an area that was once known as LP card, you guys had the wisdom and forethought to hang on to a piece of that to continue career and technical education in a welding area. So, with that in mind, we've named it jointly the Pasadena Memorial Tegler Career Training Center, and I'm grateful to say and proud to say for you folks that it's been awarded a three-year credential as an NCCER accredited training and education facility. That falls under the sponsorship of Associated Builders and Contractors of ABC and CMF, Construction and Maintenance Education Foundation. This recognition is indicative, literally, of the excellent efforts exhibited in the preparation of the documentation required and the audits that we did and our review from our accreditation team. So, I want to thank Zeke, and I want to thank Andrew, Zeke Garcia, Andrew Tugwell, for hosting that accreditation visit and site visit, and the wonderful transformation that took place from when Zeke was actually teaching there, and I used to go audit him at LP card. So, it's an amazing turnaround. So, on behalf of ABC and CMF, we welcome Pasadena Memorial Tegler Career Training Center to the network of high school training networks that have successfully completed this accreditation process. We look forward to working with you folks. We look forward to the success of your students, and you never know. We may be coming back in the near future. And another national champion at the National Craft Champion that ABC hosts annually has a gold place winner that has happened here more-- in this district more than any of the schools or associations we sponsor, and that's with high school students. So, that's a big kudo. I'm going to look down for a second because I wanted to close with something that was a bit personal. I wanted to relate what a favorite author of mine wrote in a book, and it's a synopsis, Outlive Your Life. And in that, I believe what he has to say is very indicative and very representative of Pasadena ISD and the leadership it's shown. And he states something of this nature, "Hopefully, we will live our lives and do things that will continue past our time on earth. Not so much that we ourselves will be remembered, but what we have done will continue to work through others long after we have passed through this life." I really do believe that is indicative of Pasadena. Of all the teachers we work with, and I work with a lot, about 66 high schools, 130-something faculty members, I always have the comfort zone coming back to Pasadena ISD, and not just because I went to school in this district. It's because of you care for your students. And I really do believe that this continued support through-- I know it's been over 100 years that we've had a school district in CTE, that you continue to show support, the administrations, the boards, after all these years, that will continue to make a positive difference in the lives of students that are served. And I appreciate that more than you'll ever know. So, what I'd like to do is Zeke and Tanya, and you can grab that, Zeke, you're more nimble than I am. What I'd like to do is at least let the audience and board see what we have.
Oh, wow. Nice.
We'd like the board, obviously, to be hung up somewhere to where it's indicative of showing the recognition and the status they've achieved. And then, we also have the banners because we are the ones.
Oh.
We're the ones, our ABC-- And then we also have the banners because we are, we're the ones, our ABC CMF, we're the ones that actually, you know, promote, support everything that is done for the organization. And I can still say so far at no cost.
Oh, wow.
Other than what y'all invest in school. So that's what I...
Thank you, Dr. Horton, for that presentation and for your continued support. I have no doubt we will have years of winners from these programs. I'd also like to thank the instructors, Mr. Andrew Tugwell, Mr. Ignacio Pinalis, along with the Principal of Memorial, Jeremy Richardson. Vanika Harris is our CTE Assistant Principal. Thank you for being here tonight. Jean Kane from Tegler and Jamie Davis, they do amazing work with those students as well. And as always, Dr. Powell, board, we could never do what we do in CTE without your support. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
If you want pictures out in the lobby, if y'all don't mind taking a quick picture.
I can do that.
Leslie, I still love her.
Me too.
Thank you. Thank you.
So board members, we're going to switch gears for just a second, and I'm going to bring Elise Neff up to the podium. She's, of course, you know her well, our instructional specialist for coordinated school health. And she's going to say a few words about an awesome award. And I see Amber McNish is here as well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. We have an award to give out. The Alliance for Healthier Generation recognized 518 schools this year as America's Healthiest Schools across the United States, and two of them are right here from Pasadena ISD. These two schools have found creative ways to keep all kids active, eating healthy, and engaged in learning. They have gone above and beyond during the pandemic to ensure that they were setting them on a path to lifelong health. Red Bluff Elementary achieved a bronze award for the America's Healthiest School. While Sparks Elementary achieved, Sparks Elementary achieved this silver award. Schools earned the distinction by successfully meeting a rigorous set of criteria for serving healthier meals and snacks, getting students moving more, offering high-quality physical and health education, and empowering school leaders to become healthy role models. So congratulations to both of these schools.
And their principals are here, so we'll wave. Thank y'all for coming tonight. They do an awesome job. And board members, last but not least, we want to recognize a really outstanding award that we have just been notified of, and that's the fact that we're excited to announce we now have three model PLC schools and are now being awarded the Solution Tree Model PLC School District Award. So I want to personally acknowledge the work of Dr. Marcia Jones, Dan Hoppy, and Janet Nuzzi, who are leading the way in Pasadena ISD to continue the momentum around growing our PLC practices. You're truly making a difference, Marcia and your team. I appreciate y'all so much and for everything you do across the board. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Marcia. She'll come up as the Executive Director and introduce our special guests.
Good evening, Dr. Powell and the board. I've enjoyed being a part of such an amazing team that we are able to offer yearly professional developments for our team and grow our teachers in our PLC best practices to help them focus on collaborative efforts and give them the tools that they need to become these amazing PLCs for our students. Solution Tree has a rigorous application in order to be considered for this honor, and we had so much to showcase from all of the schools that are implementing these practices. We're so excited Solution Tree is here tonight to recognize the outstanding work, though, of Millstead, Morris, and Miller Intermediate in our entire district. Board and Dr. Powell, we cannot thank you enough for your support. We were able to achieve this level of success because of the support and encouragement that you give us to do this work. We are honored this evening to have Darren Grissom, State Director, and Jennifer Ivey, Director in Educational Partnerships from Solution Tree, to present awards this evening and to the schools and to the district. Thank you.
Dr. Powell and trustees, we are honored to be here this evening to help recognize the commitment of your school leaders and faculty to ensure the success of every child here in Pasadena ISD. As the State Executive Director for Solution Tree here in Texas, I have the opportunity to see education in action all across districts in the state. Pasadena has some of the very best here in your leaders. And Dr. Powell, her curriculum instruction team, student-focused campus principals, and thousands of dedicated classroom teachers, they all understand that all means all when engaging students in meaningful learning. As Dr. Jones mentioned, PISD has three campuses that have achieved the PLC Model School status over the last year. We're going to be presenting them shortly with a flag and a certificate so they can celebrate that at their campus. And my colleague, Jennifer Ivey, who's worked very closely with your district to help guide Solution Tree's support of your professional learning communities, will recognize those schools.
So our first model PLC is Millstead Middle. Principal Pollock and his team have approached their collaboration time with Laser Focus on student achievement and created a dedicated, a specific dedicated intervention and enrichment time. The result is significant gains in student mastery, particularly in reading and mathematics. Congratulations, Millstead Middle. The second campus to receive the PLC Model School designation is Morris Middle School. Principal Lawland and her fellow trailblazers created a structure that highlighted the best teaching practices. From gathering data through instructional rounds, sharing best practices during PLC collaboration time, proactively supporting new teachers and implementing a co-teaching model, Morris has consistently outpaced the state average for student mastery and has seen meaningful increases in achievement by special education and at-risk students. Well done, Morris Trailblazers. And finally, PISD's most recent PLC Model School is Miller Intermediate. In 2015, many students struggled academically at Miller Intermediate. Practices put in place by former Miller Principal Reyes and continued by the current principal, Mikey Eskamelia, created a new future for all Miller Falcons. By leveraging data and holding each student to the highest standards, the Miller Intermediate team flipped the rankings and is achieving at the very top of schools here in Pasadena. Congratulations, Miller Intermediate.
And it's me again. Last but not least, Pasadena ISD has demonstrated the highest level of student support across the entire district by implementing the highly effective PLC at Work concepts. This journey began in 2013 with building a new culture of achievement and positive results. Quality instruction, relevant coaching, data-driven decisions, and an ongoing investment by you all in professional development has charted a course that allows more and more PISD students to demonstrate mastery in core subject areas. From pre-K to high school, your students have benefited from the belief that every child deserves a quality education. Pasadena ISD is the only current PLC Model School district in the state of Texas and is easily the largest district in the nation to achieve this honor. Enrollment in Pasadena ISD is more than double that of the next-largest PLC model district. And Jennifer and I are not here alone. We reached out to the Legislative Delegation for Pasadena ISD, and I'll be passing along some congratulatory letters from some of your legislators and more to come. And they look forward to visiting, when it's safe to visit campuses, to see the great work going on.
Awesome.
This all speaks to the amazing leadership of Dr. Powell and her team. So Pasadena ISD, congratulations.
Thank you both for being here tonight and recognizing these amazing leaders and campuses. We're very blessed in Pasadena ISD to have teachers in the trenches that believe in this work and work really, really hard, especially now during COVID, they're not abandoning those PLC practices and using them to make sure students are achieving either in this time. So thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your guidance and your leadership. On the other side of this, and we'll continue to work hand in hand to just do better and better things for our students. So thank you.
Thank you. Y'all are awesome. Thank you.
Up there, even though we have more great things to celebrate, we've got to get on with our business. So just wanted to spotlight a few of the huge awards and accomplishments of PISD.
We have no public comments this evening, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
One time.
One time. Next, personnel section, and we're going to move, we normally do administrative personnel first, and so we're going to do that again tonight. We're going to go ahead and do administrative personnel, and then we'll move on with the personnel section.
Madam President, I move to approve Addendum A.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiana, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration of... Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
We only have one this evening. So I would like to welcome back Ms. Kellyanne Callahan. Is she with us this evening?
I see her name.
Yes, I'm here, yes. Let's see if I can...
Since you are coming back to us for the position of Licensed Specialist for In-School Psychology, do you have any family with you this evening?
They're actually getting ready for bed.
Well, welcome back. We're excited for you.
Thank you.
We hope to see you around soon. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kiana. Okay. Consideration possible approval of the Professional Services Contract with ReadyMD for onsite COVID-19 testing for individuals designated by Pasadena ISD for an estimated cost of $100,000.
Go move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
So board members, we're going to move ahead with this, even though we know there's some discussion about state testing that's possible in the future. We feel like at this time, it would be a peace of mind for our employees to have this available quickly so they can either find out their results and get home and get feeling better or get back to work. So this is going to be something I think our families are going to definitely benefit from. So I don't know if you have any questions, but we're excited to offer this. ReadyMD's been an excellent partner.
Anybody have any questions?
Probably the site location, or is it portable?
It's going to be in the maxi quad that was formerly housing our Dobie 9. So it'll be right there in the portable buildings between Dobie and Moore Elementary because that was a space where we didn't have any employees or any students at this time. We felt that was safest.
Great, thank you. Are the tests going to be the quick test?
They are. They're going to be the rapid test. So we're excited about that, getting the results quickly.
Good, good.
So will there be someone there during school hours every day?
Have we established nine to four or eight to four? What are we doing?
Negotiating that start time. It'll be during the pre-October workday.
Workdays only.
Every day.
Every day, but not Saturday.
Every school, four days.
And how soon will this be available?
Well, now, if we get it approved tonight... Okay, Tony's going to come to the microphone. If we get it approved tonight, how soon would we be up and running?
I have an appointment tomorrow with Dr. Homestead from ReadyMD. We're hoping that he can get out on-site for us and we can line up, you know, we've got to line up internet and those type things. But Tom Douglas and his crew has already made sure the area that we're going to use in that building is ready to go. And Robert Saavedra and their crew has cleaned and been ready. So it's just basically logistics after this of like the phone lines and the computers. And so hopefully, we can get that up and running rather quickly. I would like it by the end of this week or the beginning of next, but I have my fingers crossed.
And will he furnish the personnel?
Yes, he furnishes. I believe it's going to be two people, an EMT that does the actual testing, and then a person that does the paperwork side of it.
Thank you very much, Tony.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Certified personnel and support personnel, these are two items for information only.
We have a presentation in the next section. I was just getting her out.
So next, we'll move to the educational section, and this is spotlight on professional development.
So board members, we had talked about spotlighting different initiatives and of course, programs within our district so that you stay up to date on the latest accomplishments. So we've asked Tracy to present to you tonight on professional development, kind of give it to you in a COVID perspective.
And I'm going to get it up just really soon. I felt confident. It looks a little different than what I was expecting, but I think, I think it's going to be great. Oh, I think I have hope. Okay. Sure. Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk to you about professional development. You know, Pasadena has a super great professional development reputation. We are known for, that's not when I'm seen here, but we are known for our professional development around the state. And as you know, two years ago, Deanne received an award for being the Outstanding Superintendent in Support for Professional Development. So we're excited to kind of share what is going on with professional development pre-COVID and then COVID. And we were a little bit reluctant to look at that. It was with a little bit of trepidation. Are we still doing everything that we need to do to meet the needs of our staff members? And I'm happy to report that we are. Do y'all need to do something? Okay, come on. Join me. All right. So I want to talk about, this did not go at all like it did in practice, I apologize. I wanted to talk about, first of all, our new teacher support. As you know, a couple of years ago, well, it's now been two years ago, ATCP morphed into our RISE Professional Development. And RISE is a program that is through my department, but we use those ATCP specialists to support our... Okay. All right, okay, there we go. Okay, there we go. To support our new teachers, and these are teachers that are new to teaching, not just new to the district. In 2019, 20, we had 260 brand-new teachers. So we wanted to look at the professional development for those teachers and just see how many of them took advantage of our RISE program. I'm happy to report that we looked at unique participants. We didn't count them more than one time. I'm happy to report that all 260 attended at least a few of our RISE Professional Development activities, as well as a bunch of veteran teachers that also attended. So we had 107% participation in that program. So as we moved forward and looked at this year, 2021, and we had moved to all virtual instruction, so we were a little concerned, are we still going to be able to meet the needs of our first-year teachers? This year in Pasadena ISD, we have 275 first-year-to-teaching newbies, and they're coming into a different world, a different reality. They have their face-to-face kiddos, their virtual kiddos. And so we wanted to make sure that we adapted our training so that they could easily access that training and be successful in the classroom. So when I'm, we're looking at what we... So, when I'm, we're looking at what we've done so far, we just looked from June 1st of 2020 to September 30th of 2020, we already have 196 of those 275 teachers that have tapped in to our RISE training. So, we're already, four months in, we're already at 71% of those teachers participating. In fact, we had a training tonight, and that number would go up if we were going through October, so we're very excited about that. So, as we started to think about our pre-COVID impact with Professional Development, you know, I knew we had done really well for the 2019, 2020 school year, but we decided, as we looked at it, that we were going to stop on March 16th, because we know COVID happened after March 16th. So, we looked pre-COVID for that year, and we had over 80% of our staff members, now this is not just teachers, this is any employee of the school district. In fact, we had 7,564 of our 9,400-ish employees that have participated in, and remember, we only counted them one time, even if they went to 37 trainings, we only counted them one time. So, we felt like that was a pretty good participation rate. We've already talked about the, about the RISE trainings, we had offered 33 courses during this timeframe, and had, again, more than 100% participation. But then, here comes COVID, and it was something that was difficult to pivot and change what we were doing, but we managed to do that. So, we wanted to take a little snapshot of that time, and look just at what we've offered from March 16th of 2020 to September 30th of 2020. If you'll, if you'll notice, we offered only 727 courses, and I mean, that's a lot, but it's not what we would typically have, have offered, because we had to offer them all virtually. And so, so we wanted to look at those numbers, but we still had excellent participation. Now, what, the blue circle in the middle talks about, for our Innovation and Development Department, they developed 69 courses that were specific to Professional Development for teachers, to teach them how to teach virtually, and to teach face-to-face. Again, whole new world. So, of those 69 courses, we had 4,090 people that participated in those courses, just in this four-month snapshot.
So, that's pretty much all our teachers.
Pretty much every teacher, except maybe, you know, ones that were hired late, or whatever. So, we're just very impressive with, with COVID, that we're still getting this much participation in training. Now, I'm even going to narrow it down a little bit more, we're just going to talk about the summer. We're not talking from March 16th to the end of the school year, and we're not talking about from August 16th to September 30th, we're just talking June 1st to August 16th. In that amount of time, we had almost 8,000 people participate in Professional Development. Again, it's virtual, who knew that they would participate? But we are super excited that they did. We offered 339 right-on-time courses that would, you know, be helpful to teachers as they are trying to navigate this uncharted territory. So, I'm happy to report, on the blue little column here, you'll see pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, we are strong in Professional Development, 80% of every bus driver, police officer, paraprofessional teacher, assistant principal, principal, any role you, cafeteria workers, any role you can think of, 80% of our staff participates, and participated prior in the 2019, 2020 school year, 80% participated in Professional Development. But I was, I had some trepidation when I was going to look post-COVID, I'm happy to report that 81% participated post, post-COVID change, and so that is phenomenal, we are very excited about that, and, and just seeing enthusiasm just overflow. And this is my last slide, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of a snapshot of what that looked like for just your average Joe staff member. If you look at the first column, pre-COVID, our teachers between June 1st of 2019 and March 16th of 2020, they average, every staff member in the district averaged 37 hours of Professional Development. That's phenomenal, 37 hours of Professional Development. Our new teachers, the orange column talks about our new teachers, and in that same timeframe, just in new teacher training, this doesn't count the other training they got, just in new teacher training, 11.3 hours for our new teachers, and that's just to help them be successful in the classroom. And I'm not going to read every statistic here, but you will see that we're, we are, our teachers really believe in being lifelong learners, and really believe in, in training and learning and improving themselves, but it's not only those teachers, it's every staff member. I work with Tom Douglas, with the Maintenance Department, they do a lot of training, a crazy amount of training. The cafeteria workers do a crazy amount of training. It's wonderful to see people really tied in, and they're not letting COVID cause them to, to say, "Well, we can't really do that, oh, it's not convenient," or whatever. They are really embracing continuous learning. Do y'all have any questions for me?
I just wish you'd show some enthusiasm.
Oh, yeah, that's sorry, you know, it's at the end of the day, so more now.
Obviously, this was all a big surprise to us, right? So, what are your key learnings, and what would you do differently?
Um, I think that probably the most important thing that we learn is that, you know, that everything we do, we have to, okay, I hate to use this term, but this is something we're saying all the time now in, in the RISE Department, everything is figure-outable. I know that's not a real word, but we had to figure out new ways to do the most effective things that are going to benefit, benefit students, but we can't rely on, you know, the traditional things that we've done over, this is my seventh year in this position, and, you know, some things we have replicated for six years. No more can we replicate, we are having to be original and creative, and, and think outside of the box, so, but we're still getting it done, where our specialists, and C and I are still continuously figuring out how to navigate it. The one thing that I think that we would do differently perhaps, is spend more time on the engagement of the learner, just like our teachers are having to spend more time on, how do we get the students engaged? Turning on your camera is not engagement, even turning on your camera and nodding your head at the appropriate time is not engagement. So, we have to continually find ways for our, our different staff members to be engaged, just like we do for our kiddos.
Great job, thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you so much.
You did an awesome job, you and your team.
Sure. Our HR Department just came out with some research across Region 4, and our district has a 7.9% turnover rate in this summer, and that was one of the very lowest of the whole area, and I really do believe this taking care of our teachers makes a big difference.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Thank you.
That does make a difference. Okay, let's move on. Consideration possible approval of the state-approved Innovative Course, School to College for 2020, 2021, to be offered at all Pasadena ISD high schools.
Go move, second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana, discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Dr. Powell, I think that this is one of the top-notch courses to be offered in our district. It sets the standards for lifelong learners, and for these kids to receive the information that they need in high school, to be successful in college or in the workplace. This is an outstanding course.
We're excited to offer it, and it'll partner very well with our team leadership, which is a one-semester course, so it'll be focused on our seniors, but we're excited to add that in addition to Avid and other programs that we have like this.
I had one question. On the teacher qualifications, it says, "An assignment for school to college is allowed with a valid Texas Secondary Classroom Teaching Certificate. Additionally, it is recommended that the teacher hold either the counselor at grade PK through 12, or school counselor, early childhood grade well certificates." We don't have enough counselors in our district to do this, are our teachers that teach it going to be given some additional instruction?
Our team leadership folks have a lot, that's a lot of what team leadership really is revolves around, is working with and counseling with kids. A lot of that curriculum, even though they don't have a counseling certificate, that's the kind of work that they've been doing for years, and so it's a very natural fit for them to, they're certified in what's required, but really, the experience they have gives them that other piece that is recommended.
Are we teaching this now, in any of our schools?
No, this is going to be a new course that we're beginning this spring, if you guys approve it.
I think it's wonderful.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the application for T E A missed instructional day waivers for all campuses.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion?
Board Members, we've approved this once, but we realized when we went to put it into the system, we had one date that we need to correct, so we just asked that you approve it, so that we can get this submitted in a timely manner to T E A.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the application for T E A, is this another one?
This one has not been approved, we've had a couple of hurricane scares, so this is another one.
Okay. This is for the application for T E A missed instructional day waivers for all campuses.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Roberts, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of 2019 through 2023, Amendment Number 101, Memorandum of Understanding Between Pasadena Independent School District and the Harris Center for Mental Health in I D D.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. This is another for information only, bilingual and English is the second language, ESL Program Evaluation for 2019, 2020, and our presenter is Rolando Mershan.
Mershan.
Yes, this is a requirement that they present their program evaluation, and then, of course, he has some great stats for you regarding our ELL learners.
Thank you so much for... Thank you so much for having me today. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you some of the highlights of our bilingual ESL program evaluation that we run every year. And so, we have to understand the limitations of the data to have a complete and full evaluation, but I want to highlight some of the, some of the numbers and important notes to have. We had a total of 16,197 English learners during that school year, which represent a 3.6% of our students in total. The graphic shows the way that we are placing our students in the programs, the big majority of them are in the transitional bilingual program, followed by the gray area, which is our ESL pull-out program, and 4% of them are in a two-way dual program, because we have all these three types of programs to offer to our English learners. And 9% of our, of our parents denied services for our students. Interestingly enough, that's the same percentage of parents who were denying services last year, 9% of our kids. When in terms of academic progress, we were obviously not able to have this bad result. So, we decided to go, because we started as a district to apply the measure of academic progress of math training, testing, and what we did is kind of compare our results, and what the graph shows, we have, this is the big board for the REACH, which is the road scale, is a way that the company that develops this test actually grew throughout these three years in comparison nationwide. So, the gray line that you see in the top is the norm, right? We have norm over probably between 500 and 700,000 students nationwide of the English administration. The Spanish standards have not been yet created, they were in the process of doing that with all the kids who were participating last year. So, what we noticed in here is that our kids behave between the norm of what we expected, right? We're expecting that 68% of our, of our students were represented in that percentage, so all our EL were in that area of percentage, so that's a good point to do in the math area. In the reading area, although we noticed a little bit of a bigger deviation for the norm, we still are within that standard deviation, so we are in the expected zone of measurement and progress. All the things that this test can allow us is to predict how the kids are going to perform in the state of the... So, some highlights there, our third graders are really, our ELs are performing kind of at the same level that all students in our district for both math and reading. For mathematics, we have our second graders and fourth graders, EL, are also performing at the same comparable levels that everybody else in the district. So, in terms of that, if we're going to analyze how this is going to project it, how didn't we take the test? So, we noticed that our ELs are performing in second grade English mathematics, in third grade is Spanish reading, Spanish mathematics, fourth grade, English mathematics, and ELs perform at the same level as all students in fourth grade Spanish mathematics, which is aligned to our practices and our current bilingual program model, right? Then, the other measure that we have to report is attaining of English proficiency, and this is measured through TELPA. Again, the TELPA's open during the spring, right? So, the TELPA's window was in early January, early February, all the way to March, so we were interrupted. So, we only have very partial data. However, when we look at the proficiency level in total, we notice that our kids in general are progressing, right? We're expecting the majority of them, they're at the beginning level, and go slowly progressing to the advanced, the advanced high, as they're going through their school life. Another area of, to highlight here, again, keep in mind that it's limited data, the state expect our, all our ELs to progress at least one proficiency level per, per year, and we noticed in the light, the turquoise blue, that we are growing, and we are actually outperforming the expected growth, the state expect in general, a 32% growth per year in population, and we are a little higher than that. Now, exit criteria was a little bit difficult, the state is aligning with ESAR requirements, and... And um but because of all the situation, they decided to change the exit criteria for this year. Uh, we went through a very rigorous process. Uh, we identified almost more than twenty-two hundred kids who have the potential to be reclassified. Uh, when we came back, we were able to test uh, I think it was one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three kids of those. Uh, they, we were able to reclassify three hundred and ninety-four. Most of our kids kind of missed for one point or two points in the area of writing. And that's why we're not able to reclassify more kids. But it still is a good process and we were able to follow all those. Professional development kind of uh tagging with uh Ms. Sullivan here. Uh, we continue offering lots of participation and opportunities for professional development. Uh, this is one of our cohorts that ended the ESL Institute right before taking the test for ESL certification. Uh, but we have more than three thousand eight hundred and seventy participation in professional development throughout the school year, including para professionals and teachers and administrators. Uh, any question?
Questions? You did a great presentation. Thank you so much. You're not letting uh COVID get the best of us.
No, 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 we're not. We're not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 Texas Governor's Office Criminal Justice Division Trinity Prevention and Intervention Grant Award in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 Harris County Department of Education Case for uh Kids Partnership Grant Award for Frazier Elementary and the corresponding interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Ed and Pasadena ISD in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2020-2023 U.S. Department of Justice Preventing School Violence Stop School Violence Grant Award in the amount of seven hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-two and the associated grant-funded position. So move. Second. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion. Boy, our grant department is really earning their money.
That's great.
Somebody, yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
What are going to be the qualifications for this individual?
Well, right now, a lot of our threat assessment falls on our counselors. Um, so I don't want to really speak to this because either Olivia's on the Zoom or shit. Okay. Well, if y'all want to focus in on her and let her answer that question because they wrote the grant, uh, this is going to take some of the work off the campuses, you know, before COVID, our number one focus and remains our number one focus is on safety. And the state requires a lot of documentation regarding threat assessment. And we have been following those guidelines, but it's been an extra lift for our campuses. So this individual will be working with that. Uh, we've had so many train. But Olivia, now that you're on, will you just explain the credentials of the person we'll be looking for to take this threat assessment specialist position?
Sure. Um, and actually, I'm.
We lost her.
Ask Karen McCarley because she really has a profession job description. And so, share.
I know that they're going to be looking for people that have worked in this area, so it's probably going to be a counselor, but I don't want to say that unless that was written into the grant. And I have not read that specific part. So Karen, is she on here or Troy, do you know?
I'm on here.
Okay, great.
Olivia, did you want me to to take this question? Okay.
Yes.
Um, yes, because the uh with the threat assessment, just like you were saying, Dr. Powell, it does fall a lot on the um counseling staff, on the administrative staff. So in order to support that, it is going to be someone who has um preferably a master's degree in either administration or counseling. So those would be the main qualifications. Thank you.
Well, Olivia, we appreciate these grants. They're absolutely fantastic. Uh, you're doing an outstanding job and it's just such a pleasure to see these grants and to be able to approve them every board meeting, so thank you so much.
Thank you for your support. I have an incredible team, but um it's it's been great working with all of the different groups and everybody is always on board. Sometimes grants can be scary, but nobody shies away, so thank you for that.
You're a pro. Well, thank you so much.
Okay, no other questions? Let's move to all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2020-2021 Harris County Department of Ed Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center Cycle Nine Year Five Grant Award for South Houston Intermediate and the corresponding interlocal grant between interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Ed, Pasadena ISD, in the amount a hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Of the 2020-2021 Nutrition Now Dairy Max Grant Award in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts, discussion.
Yes, I had a question. What schools are these? What schools would have the carts?
Carla is Mary on here. I know we have breakfast in the classroom for most all of our schools now that our kids are eating free breakfast, free lunch across the board. Uh, but Mary, if you want to go ahead and chime in? No? Okay. Angie Stallings is saying she's not on here. So most all of our campuses have, of course, uh some way of getting that food grab and go, uh the carts. Uh, so we can get you a list of the specific campuses that use that process rather than kids having to go through the cafeteria lines. You know, with Dobie and others, uh doesn't matter if it's high school, intermediate, middle school or elementary, they have a lot of creative ways of getting food.
So is everybody?
So uh we'll make sure we get a list of who's using the carts specifically.
Okay, I was just curious because it didn't, I mean, it seemed fairly inexpensive and to cover everybody. That was just my question, that's all.
Other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Student achievements, we know there's a lot of good things going on in the district that we're not showcasing any this evening. But um keep up the good work, kiddos. Policy section, consideration of possible adoption of local district update two thousand, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty dot of uh affecting E M B local. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We're all ready to the financial section, budget amendments for September.
I'm moved approval of the budget amendments.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of interlocal agreement with Harris County for the recovery of funds from the Coronavirus Relief Fund, C R F, and grant of authority to to the superintendent or designee to negotiate and execute all necessary understandings, assurances and or agreements related to the interlocal agreement and recovery of funds from the C R F in directing and authorizing the superintendent or her designee to act as the official representative for Pasadena ISD regarding the recovery of funds in the amount of six hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion.
So board members, this will help with uh some of the matching funds for T E A vocal bulk order computers that we talked about coming in. We're still waiting on those, hopefully November or December at the latest. Uh, this is Adrian Garcia's office doing matching funds, so it's coming out of the commissioner's office. Uh, and Gloria's been working with them closely, so once we get this paperwork signed, uh that money should be flowing our way.
Very good, right? Anybody have any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a sole sole source purchase from Cyber Reef Solutions for content filtering service for students MiFi's in the amount not to exceed a hundred twenty thousand dollars for the 2020-2021 school year. So move. Second.
Question.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana, question, Mr. Roberts.
That MiFi, is that the connection?
Yes, sir. So it's the little box that we give that makes it possible for the internet to be accessible on multiple devices. There might be multiple children in one home. I think this most recent batch was getting what, six to ten devices on it?
Oh, my.
At a time in that household. So this will uh prevent them from going to sites and areas of the internet that we wouldn't as a district want to promote or allow. And someone asked, well, how do you know about a kid that's doing virtual with their own internet? Well, that's a parent issue. But since we're providing that device, we want to make sure we put some assurances in place that we're trying to monitor that closely.
That's awesome.
Is the area which they can use that restricted? In other words, can they use it in Louisiana or Montana?
They can take it wherever. Uh, it will track it with this software, so we'll be able to know where it's at. So for some reason they moved out of our area, you know, it's one thing to turn it off, but it's another thing to get your actual device back as well because there's cost with the device as well as with the service. So this will help with us tracking where they're using that at, so we'll be able to have that data. But if you go to grandma's for Christmas or Thanksgiving, uh possibly in the country or out, yes, it would be working. I think out of the country, though, that probably would not work because that would be an excessive.
It won't work out of the country?
No, because of excessive fees. It won't roam like that.
At the beginning, that that was actually bad. It wasn't?
No, and we've had issues with employees going across the, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Did you have something?
I can say that anytime we have even an employee that travels, they have to send us an email and we get the specific dates, exactly where they're going, how long they're going to be gone. We give them access to travel on it and then we cut off international immediately.
How do you, how do you do that with a with a child that has one?
So, well, right now, no children have access to international travel for MiFi's. It is strictly on the state side only.
Oh, okay.
It's home.
Very good. Thank you. Consideration, uh next is information only financial compliance review, and that's Barbara Gramps.
Good evening, all. In 2019-2020, the financial compliance team finalized seven correction corrective action reviews. These reviews were started in 2018-2019, transition from internal audit to financial compliance. Of these seven reviews, Young, Lomax and South Houston Intermediate received one hundred percent achievement. Pasadena High, South Houston High, Dobie and T needed improvement in one or two areas. The Shaw Investigation Report was also completed. Also in 2019-2020, financial compliance developed a new scoring matrix in order to maximize improvement where needed. Tests are conducted on the LP card, deposit process, safeguarding assets, accounting, purchasing process and other miscellaneous items. In nineteen twenty, financial compliance completed eight reviews on two elementary, two intermediate, two middle school, one alternative campus and one department. Of these reviews, the scores on the six tests mentioned above resulted in two A's, three B's, one C and two F's. In regards to the F scores, financial personnel has recently been replaced at these campuses and we do expect to see improvement in the near future. The scores on the activities at these campuses resulted in five B's, one C and one F. The department that was reviewed does not have activities to score. Areas noted where improvement is needed are on proper use and coding of the LP card transactions, deposit processes and purchasing processes. Financial compliance communicates with the district trainer on weakness areas for each campus after the review is complete in order to help these campuses and departments excel in their daily tasks. Due to the stay-at-home order, the financial compliance team was not able to complete as many reviews as we would have under normal circumstances. And during the stay-at-home time, we were able to conduct research on one of our reviews. We assisted accounting by reviewing LP card statements for coding and proper documentation as well as assist accounting with still-dated check research. Barring any other catastrophes, financial compliance has scheduled nineteen reviews and eight follow-up reviews for 2020-2021. Any questions?
I just wanted to say I think it's an outstanding report.
Well, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. We appreciate the job that you've done.
Thank you.
Nikki, we bought on the last one.
Yes, I checked it off, so.
All right. I'm way down here.
Well.
No, I'm good.
No, if, does anybody, I checked it off, but.
My memory is not very long. I just want to.
Okay, good, good, okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I just usually try and check it off because I don't trust my memory. Okay, consideration possible approval of the 2020-2021 Financial Con uh Con Financial Compliance Review Schedule. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of emergency declaration due to preparation of uh of Hurricane Beta on September twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion.
So this just goes along with the waiver that you approved earlier.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration, we're moving to the operations section. Consideration possible approval of a memorar- memorandum of understanding, M O U, agreement between the City of Pasadena and the Pasadena Independent School District. So move.
Second.
I think that was a motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick, was that? I'm not real sure what order that came in.
That makes no difference.
Okay. And third by Mr. Roberts. All in favors, uh any discussions?
I think it's great to work with the city.
Yeah, fantastic.
They've been great partners.
Yeah.
I know.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, A E A, number zero four for the Pasadena High School Culinary Arts Kitchen renovation project in the amount of sixty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fernandez, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number zero one for the Pasadena High School Culinary Arts Kitchen renovation. for the Pasadena High School Culinary Arts Kitchen renovations project in the amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion.
Yes. Morgan, may I?
Yes.
I had an opportunity to visit with Ms. Hager regarding this. And we have two new culinary teachers at Pasadena High. And they are doing a fantastic job of just doing virtual teaching for these students because it looks like it will be sometime next year before they can get back in. We all know the issues with the soil at Pasadena High School. So I think kudos are in order for those new teachers and the outstanding work that they're doing with students.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We're going to move to the construction update. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, let's move to the miscellaneous section. Consideration and possible approval of medication, I'm sorry, medication, mediation agreement. I may need some of that. In DL versus Pasadena Independent School District, stop it. Texas Education Agency docket number three ten dash S E dash zero eight two zero and related actions.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We have no public comments, so let's set the date for the next regular meeting, suggested Tuesday, November seventeen.
What day are we supposed to be doing that meeting?
That's in December. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Say your.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, I think it was Mr. Fernandez.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. I'm worried about that one that Jack questioned. So let's go back and vote on it just in case because I don't want to leave a hole. Let's see if I can.
Yes, we voted on it.
We did.
We voted on it and then Carla stood up and talked. And that's probably what maybe threw y'all off.
I checked it off, so, okay.
I checked, I checked it off, too.
Thank you.
Carla also got a list of the schools on that one grant.
So we have good, good.
Pretty good.
Okay, Carla, you can give that to us after, after I adjourn. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-one P M.